Mr. Jivinangelo?
Here.
Mr. Jim?
Here.
Mrs. Wolford?
Here.
Mr. Scupora? Mr. Baldeneri?
Here.
Mr. Forish?
Here.
Mayor Griffin?
Present.
Six present. We have a motion to approve the minutes from July 9, 2012, please.
Madam Mayor, I move the minutes in the July 9, 2012 meeting be approved and accepted. Be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we have approval with fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of July 2012, may I have a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, second.
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldeneri, thank you. May I -- all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Citizens request, if you want to speak, please go to the back of the mic, state your name and your address.
My name is Peggy Reed and I live at 511 Birchwood Drive, which is in Unity Township, but I do have to come into the city frequently for doctor's appointments, dentist appointments, all that kind of thing. My complaint is the Panko thing that is to be used to pay for parking meters. That probably is a good idea for some people that have these smartphones and know how to operate them. I for one, I have one, but I'm learning and it takes us a little bit longer. I think that parking meters, putting the money in is just as good. I was down on Depot Street to Dr. Bryant's this morning and I saw Kay doing her job and that's when she gave me the ticket to park somewhere else, which I was able to. I am handicapped, I have a handicap plate on the back of my car and there are so many times you cannot find places where you can park and it's convenient for you to walk. So that's my complaint. Also, I was, I understand that the rate for the overtime parking is not going to be what it was originally stated in the paper, that it would be $10, raised to $10. I could see going from $3 to $5, but to jump from $3 to $5, I think that's pretty crass. It's not good for most of your older people and I don't know how many older people get parking tickets, but it is driving people out of town and it's hurting whatever businesses we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. Kurt?
Kurt Fry, 228 Lloyd Avenue. My question, got a couple of questions and comments about the proposed garbage recycling bins in Luton. My first is, you know, obviously Mr. Bush just told me just a little bit ago that they'd be free to the customers, but how is elderly supposed to take those through the snow? You know, how are they supposed to get them out to the streets? Most people, you know, my parents per se, they live on a back alley where their garbage is supposed to go in the alley. There's no room. If you put that on the alley, some car's going to come down the street down the alley and wipe those things out. There's not much room. You know, some of them is really wide, how are they supposed to fit through gates on the property that you already have existing? These are a lot of things I think you should really consider before you vote on this tonight, on just making sure that you have everything in line before you do that because, you know, a lot of elderly and even younger people not going to be able to use these because they're not going to be able to get them to where they need to go. Thanks.
I thought you could come help me.
I can do that, sure.
Yeah, Kurt, before you leave, you see the three different carts in the back, the one is, I think, 95, that's the largest of the three, and one is 65, and I believe the smallest is 35.
Did I say them?
The 65 is the one that's currently reprimanded for recycling, 65 gallon.
Is that for all the recycling or just for cans and, or is it for cans, bottles and everything like?
It's single stream recycling, so everything should be able to go into one bin.
I think we did have something in the specs that an elderly person might select a 35 gallon, which would be a little bit easier to handle, perhaps even two.
The other thing, Kurt, is, I mean, a lot of municipalities use these. I mean, and I'm sure they're, you know, they have the same issues that we have, it's just the way, the way it's going.
I mean, I've seen it more-
Would you agree?
I've seen it more in rural areas, not in like small communities where the garbage trucks have a hard time getting down alleys now. And you add something a little bit larger to, and then they have to hook that up to their truck and they're lifting it up over the side, above the truck. You're going to have issues. You don't have it around now.
The garbage trucks aren't going down too many alleys anymore. There are few, but in the most places, they're going on the streets.
All six were they go down the alleys.
Well, because of, because of Lloyd Avenue, but most of the rest of the community, they're on the streets.
Well, I see different areas with those containers, you know, lift them up with the truck, they have the garbage dumpster in front of the truck, they still go down and they dump them in the dumpsters right there and then they toss them up over.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you. All right, committee reports. Okay, board of authority reports?
Board, excuse me, getting back to committee reports, I'm not on the committee, but I certainly am interested in the status of the LUPR situation.
I have no comment at this time.
Split that Unity Township has proposed.
I have no comment at this time, it's still being evaluated by the commission as well as the-
The commissioners or the supervisors, township supervisors.
I would say it's being evaluated by the LUPR commission at this time. That's all, that's all I really can say at this point.
You're talking about the split that they're going to leave?
Right.
The way the agreement reads is that majority of municipalities would have to withdraw to disband or undo the agreement. School district councils municipality, the other two, of course, are Unity and Latrobe. As Councilwoman Wolford stated, the commission right now is working on the financial ramifications. It is likely that if the commission continues into a new tenure agreement with the township withdrawals, that there will be a tiered system of activity fees to participate. One that is to the citizens of Latrobe and then another for the Unity Township. That's the only way any difference can be made up, so they're doing a lot of number crunching to try to evaluate what the implications will be and how high the tier separation will be.
Yeah, I'm on the finance committee that is chaired by Dan Hesse and we're sitting down and going, going to go through some of that, those numbers, but the agreement is still in place for another two years. Through 2014, so we do have time, but as Alex explained, if that, if indeed Unity does pull out, then there's going to be an adjustment to the services that are provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our chief members on here, John Zellie, Anne? Joe?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the action items begin with the public works department and the first item concerns the awarding of a contract for residential commercial waste recycling bid. At this point in time, I was offered to council that the committee on studying this issue met this past week and I believe it is the consensus of the committee to reject all bids and to rebid this matter. Therefore, I will read the motion, it is a simple motion, and it reads, I move to reject all bids submitted for a five-year municipal waste contract.
Do you have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Mr. Jim, second please.
I'll second that.
Mr. Jim, may I have your vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Madam Mayor, in conjunction here with, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the manager to enter into negotiation with the Greenridge for an extended three-month extension of the current contract.
When's it expire now?
I guess two or three.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Wolford, second. All in favor of the extension, ask you for an extension?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution and it reads, authorizing request for installation of streetlights in the alley between Mary Street and Lloyd Avenue. Whereas the residents of the 400 block of Lloyd Avenue requested three streetlights to be located in the 400 block, the alley between Mary Street on the south and Lloyd Avenue in the north. Whereas the council of the city of Latrobe recognizes that these residents make significant use of the alley for ingress and ingress to their home because parking vehicles in front of their homes is prohibited. Whereas the council of the city of Latrobe desires to grant the request of these residents to install up to three streetlights in said alley and to accept the responsibility for payment for electric service to the streetlight. Now therefore, it is all section one that the council of the city of Latrobe is hereby authorized the installation of up to three streetlights to be located on poles previously placed in the alley by West Penn Power between Mary Street on the south and Lloyd Avenue on the north and the 400 block for the purpose of improving the safety and welfare of the citizens who live along the 400 block of Lloyd Avenue. And then section two, that the council of the city of Latrobe is also authorized the payment for electrical service to these streetlights from city revenue in an amount to be established by West Penn Power. And section three, that the council hereby authorizes the mayor, city manager, secretary and any other proper city officer to execute any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of this state. Motion would be to adopt, the resolution is ready.
Do you have a motion to adopt?
I so move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldeneri, second. I second that. Any questions, if I have anything on that?
Did anybody develop any cause on this for us?
No.
If we approve this, how do we, how do we stop having to put lights, streetlights in alleys for everybody?
I just, I think that at this point, this should not be construed if we do pass this as setting precedence. These streetlights, if they are to be installed, they're in a unique position since they don't have any ingress or ingress to their properties from the street on which they live. We've done it on the west side of the Lloyd Avenue, we put in some streetlights there for the same reason that the people on the east side of Lloyd Avenue have requested said lights. Hopefully, we won't be faced with this again anytime in the near future. This is a once, one-of-a-kind situation, we have to view it as such and not allow this to establish precedence.
But I think there are other, other areas in, in the city that people can't park in front of their house and, and use their alley. And in a lot of cases in the past, I think that was became, that was the responsibility of, of the homeowner, I know people that put lights in their alleys at their own expense for that reason. I just am concerned about the presence of that.
I praise Mr. Baldeneri. Any other questions?
On Lloyd Avenue, almost all Lloyd avenues like that, I mean, in front, I mean, we have dusted dormits in our homes. I, I'm having a hard time swallowing this because 18 years my kids walked on grass out there on a major highway, walking sidewalks. And they adapted and they, they kept on doing it. And I was back during the night time, it's not that bad with your car lights.
Those poles are being moved back from Lloyd Avenue, so, you know, it's a special case, I mean, it should be a special case.
But there weren't lights back there before.
They weren't getting poles moved on people's properties either. You know, this is a special case, all the poles from Lloyd Avenue are being moved on people's property and that's where they're going, on those poles that are being moved.
All right, does anybody, anybody else on council have anything to say?
If I'm not mistaken, when I first got on council and this came up back then when we had that meeting over at University, you remember? They said there was one streetlight there at one time and the neighbors complained about it and they removed it, am I not right?
That's correct.
Okay, so now they want us to put a streetlight back in there and they want us to secure costs.
Oh, they want three.
Oh, they want three.
Up to three.
Up to three.
They need to buy dusted dormits.
Anybody else?
I think we should consider the installation of one light at this point to see if it's adequate enough. If it isn't, then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Well, no, because it's a-
The bill, the bill as it reads, up to three lights, we start off by installing one, let's say it's centrally located, to see how that goes, let's work a little. I was a proponent of the, previously of the property owners themselves installing their own lights, motion sensors, put them on their garages, on their back poles, whatever. But I hate to characterize the entire Lloyd Avenue, but we do have some subsidized housing over there, we have property, we have a lot of landlord-tenant situations, so we're dealing with a different perhaps nature of residents on Lloyd Avenue in terms of income and ability to install their own lights. So we have to consider that.
The landlords should take care of that, it's just like the same thing as a landlord, when the tenant moves out with garbage, he doesn't take that garbage, but with him, the landlord is responsible for paying that garbage. It'd be the same thing, your landlord should be putting dust, it's not going out there.
No, Madam Mayor, I just, the resolution reads up to three and I don't think that if we pass it up to three, it's three. So therefore, therefore, I will have to vote against this particular resolution because of that.
To me, up to three means you could put one, two, three.
Currently, currently, there's only really space for two. The concept was when the final poles get removed after 4:15 Lloyd Avenue's utility is relocated, there will need to be another installation of a utility pole. And that was the thought where the third one would come in. And that's, that could be anywhere from six months to a year to get that, that final stretch, there's like four homes that are still strung out, beginning at 4:15 and heading towards town. Once those get removed, those utility poles, they'll install utility poles in the back and then that would be the third one would be that one.
Well, the only thing is that I do know that on the, in the alley parallel to Forest Avenue, you know, where Forest is, there is a light and it's a private light and I think that you can rent those for $13 a month or something like that. Payden, is that correct? Isn't they, they're rentable, you know, you can rent the light.
Please, I'm ensuring my words is supporting the motion, I'm just simply answering the question for the third.
Just to clarify, council really has three choices, you can vote for the resolution as it exists, you can vote it down, or if you want to amend it and limit the number of lights to a given number, you have the right to do that too. Too many, that's just a 10 minute, yeah, okay.
I call for a vote, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Art?
This is Resolution 201244. Mrs. Wolford?
No.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
No.
Mr. Forish?
No.
Mr. Baldeneri?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
No.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There's two against four now, motion passed.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item-
Madam Mayor, before we leave this subject-
Yes.
That was voting down for three. I would like to recommend, or I will make a motion for one.
Okay. What's that?
Can I be done subsequent to the vote?
The resolution was defeated, this is a different motion. It can be made, if it's not seconded, it will go nowhere. If it is seconded, then it's done by motion rather than resolution.
First vote to amend the agenda?
Oh, yes, we should, we should have a motion to amend the agenda because this isn't something that was not indicated on the agenda.
All right, I make a motion to amend the agenda so that we can vote on installing one light.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Baldeneri? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Questions?
I now make a motion that we do-
The motion is to install one streetlight and not a resolution.
It's going to be a motion.
The motion says the resolution is-
The resolution is defeated and then I'll never make a motion. And that number goes to the next resolution.
I, I'll repeat the motion, it's to install one light because there was one there.
Mr. Jim, is it at the same location, is that what you're indicating?
Yes.
At the location that you so choose, whatever is appropriate, Mr. Kelly.
Second, Mr.?
I second.
Mr. Baldeneri, okay, all?
We already made a motion to amend the agenda at that point.
We already did amend the agenda.
Yeah. We did, we made the motion.
Worth a question now, worth a question.
There was one backer before?
Yes.
Again, just as Mr. Forish had stated, that was the case.
Motion?
Okay, what council is now voting on is Mr. Jim's motion to install one streetlight.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, by those two. Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution and it's entitled to authorize and approve of directional signs from Mr. Beez. Whereas Mr. Beez has requested permission from the city for the installation of two directional signs to aid and guide patrons and whereas the city now desires to grant its approval for the installation of these signs, now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of the city of Latrobe hereby authorizes and approves installation of two directional signs that mention and would conform to provisions of Latrobe zoning ordinance, section 16651A, which states that such signs shall not exceed 18 inches by 24 inches in area. The council of the city of Latrobe further approves the location of the directional signs as follows, A, at the intersection of Lloyd Avenue, Route 981 and Unity Street on the southerly side of Lloyd Avenue, and B, at the intersection of Lloyd Avenue, Route 981 and Unity Street on the northerly side of Lloyd Avenue. Section two, the precise location of the directional signs shall be approved by the director of public works. The two directional signs shall also conform to any regulations of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation where applicable. Section three, that the directional signs shall be installed pursuant to the directions of the director of public works, it shall be maintained and insured by the applicant. Should the signs in the future present any hazard or detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Latrobe, the signs shall be removed within 30 days upon written notice by the city. Section four, that the mayor, city manager, secretary, director of public works and the other proper city officer hereby authorize to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the provisions of this resolution resolved in council of this state. The motion would be to adopt, the resolution is outlined by the senators.
Does anyone have a copy of this resolution?
No.
I just have one.
Because I don't either. I thought this was a motion, you never got the motion to me.
It's okay, we don't need it.
Yeah, how could he have the letter?
Thank you.
Do you have a motion? So it's still motion?
No, it's a resolution.
Okay.
You just have to give me a minute.
Oh, all right.
Okay, this is Resolution 201244.
No, wait, did you get the first and the second?
We don't have a motion.
Sorry.
Yeah, I tried, yeah. May I have a motion, please?
I make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldeneri? I second it. Any questions or discussion?
Alex, do we have an ordinance about, that deals with signage for businesses?
It has been a practice of council over years, to grant these requests on a conditional as desired basis. They would have to conform to PENDOC and city standards related to sign and height and, and location, that kind of thing, but we did not have-
And we install them?
We install them.
And we bill them for our time?
Correct. The concern, you know, recently is, is just proliferation of, of these directional signs.
I mean, do we bill for our time to build for material to, to pole, to sign itself and everything else? They, they provide the sign, as long as it meets our specs. I provide the pole and the hardware and the labor for doing it.
And, and we bill them for that?
And we bill them for that.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Art?
I just, I just want to add, this is a tough call. We certainly appreciate the businesses, Mr. Beez's business, but on one hand, as Alex said, we want to discourage the proliferation of signage, billboards, we're not a big fan, I'm not a big fan of this, and I don't think anybody on council is. And again, Mr. Beez wants a sign, wants to say that the fellas doesn't want to put a sign up there and we end up with a, with a pole with half a dozen signs on it. I'm not saying that'll happen, but we have to be very careful, this is a slippery slope and we need to step back and, and consider this with consequences in mind. Again, we hate to discourage and we want to help businesses in this town, certainly, but just all.
Anybody else? Okay, more?
This is Resolution 201244. Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
No.
Mrs. Wolford?
No.
Mr. Baldeneri?
I made the motion, I reluctantly vote yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There's four yes, two no.
Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda is authorizing a right-of-way easement to Unity Township Municipal Authority at the transfer station. It's my understanding, why not, we tabled this from the last meeting, there was some difficulty that we had with the easement as proposed at that time. It was tabled, the matter was tabled to this meeting, however, we do not yet have an easement which is, is appropriate, at least to, to what we desire, therefore, I'm going to suggest to council if we could perhaps table this for one more meeting. And if it doesn't, the easement doesn't come to us by that point in time, then we can reject the-
Madam Mayor, I move to table that motion.
Second?
Second.
Is this a vote, voice vote? Are all in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion to table.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda is a resolution. It's adopting and submitting to the Department of Environmental Route Protection, a revision to the official sewage facilities plan for the Adelphi USA Inc. module. And whereas section five of Act Number 537, known as the Pennsylvania Sewage Facilities Act, has certain rules and regulations of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection adopted thereunder- Chapter 71, Type 25 of the Pennsylvania Code, require the municipality to adopt an official sewage facilities plan for sewage waste and to revise said plan whenever it is necessary to determine whether a proposed method of sewage disposal for a new land development conforms to a comprehensive program of pollution control or water quality management. Whereas, Adelphi USA Inc. has proposed the development of a parcel of land identified as Adelphi Education Facility as and described in the Sewage Facility Planning Module, and proposed that such subdivision be served by sewer tap-ins. And whereas, the city finds that the subdivision described in the Sewage Facility Planning Module conforms to applicable sewage-related zoning and other sewage-related municipal ordinances and plans, and to be comprehensive program of pollution control or water quality management, now therefore be resolved. Section 1, the City of Latrobe hereby adopts and submits to the Department of Environmental Protection its approval as a revision to the official sewage facility, facilities plan of the municipality. The above referenced sewage facilities planning module, which is attached here, too. And Section 2, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and other proper city officers are hereby authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary to carry, and to sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved. In council, this state, the motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined. May I have a motion?
So. So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolfert, second?
Second, Madam-
Sorry, Mr. Baldmarry? Questions or discussion?
Are they going to be having a real little plant here for their facility over there? Is that what you're talking about here? Hope that's what I'm understanding, yeah?
Now, just as long as they're still in compliance with the DEP regulations and stuff, because of the change in the building, I'm presuming that's what this is-
If council decides, or if you're sent in from Adelphi here, you may want to answer the question, but it is correct, as council member-
Just briefly, anytime there is a request for a tapping for new construction, there is a sewage module that must be approved by DEP. It doesn't mean they're going to have it on site. It means they have to show DEP, here's how we're getting rid of our sewage, so to speak. That module is what we're approving in this resolution. We have to approve it for the Department of Environmental Protection. Any other questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, the only question I have is that, I believe, at the last meeting, Solicitor Dan Ullott said that there would be an agreement to execute between the parties. And I wondered what the stage of that agreement is in reference to the right-of-way or the passageway over the property. Do we have any idea where that agreement is?
There's been no progress on that, quite frankly, because they're trying to get the whole package, at this point, advancing, and we'll still continue to have those discussions.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll let the record know Mr. Gregory said that they are working on it. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? More?
This is Resolution 201245. Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There's six yeses.
Motion carried. Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is also under planning and development. It is a simple motion. And the motion reads, "I move to authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance to adopt a Department of Environmental Protection MS4 permit and removal of Stormwater Operation and Maintenance Plan." This is something that is required by the Department of Environmental Protection. And there would be an ordinance prepared and submitted to council at the next meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Wolfert, second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Baldmarry, any questions or discussion? Okay. All? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is also a motion to authorize the preparation of an ordinance. And it reads, "I move to authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance amending various provisions of Chapter 256, Vehicles and Traffic, revising and establishing various rates for on-street and off-street meter parking, permits and permit rates, and fines for violation." It's a motion for me to go ahead and prepare that ordinance and advertise. May I have a motion?
I make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forge, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldmarry? Any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure that I understand what the rates are going to be or the fines. Is that part of the motion, or do we have an opportunity to review those?
As far as I know, we have to have a meeting of a, I believe there's a committee established to review this to come back and make a recommendation which would be in the ordinance. So council can agree with that recommendation or not.
The council members have on their desk a spreadsheet with the proposed rates for street and surface lot meters, the rates for fines and violations, and the new proposed rates for parking passes. These will be displayed not only at City Hall from now till the September meeting. They'll also be on display via the web, so people can download and read them. These rates are pretty consistent with what's been presented to council through the fall when we had discussions related to the garage. Related to the garage discussion, it was, we needed to think about the revenue potential. In order to determine revenue potential, we kicked around and discussed the grade length rates. I know there's been common reference to, for example, the fines. The proposal that you have before you has a five-dollar rate for over-parking, from three dollars to five dollars. So all of these rates, you know, are listed before you, and again, will be presented to the public for a review. And at the next meeting, of course, council would have liberty to change, to adjust, to tweak.
Madam Mayor, I guess my question really is, are these the rates that were proposed by the parking authority, or they have since been somewhat adjusted?
These are the parking authority recommendations with comments from the last meeting and feedback that I've been getting. For example, the parking authority did recommend, and Skip-
I think you're still here tonight.
Recommend the rates for fines via a certain amount. And based on other feedback and other comments I've gotten, and you were presenting that at the last meeting.
That's why I understand that this is a modification of the parking authority recommendations.
Only on fines, not on the passes, not on the meters. They've been adjusted, Skip, down a bit.
Yeah. We took the recommendation of your survey, and we tweaked some, because some of them we felt was too high. So we made a recommendation to lower some of the fines and the parking rates, and that's what we had proposed to council.
This is essentially, is a change from the parking authority's recommendation, not only the fines, but the rates?
No.
The rates-
The fines. Again, they've been adjusted lower than what the parking authority recommended. The parking authority backs-
Is that your understanding, Skip?
Are you saying that the fines have been lowered since?
Yeah, just the fines.
Just the fines have been lowered since we had our meeting- Correct. Last month.
So the rates haven't been changed?
The rates have not for passes nor for the meters.
I have a question also, Madam Mayor. I noticed that on-street parking is two hours. You know, you have your two-hour meters, and I understand that there are individuals in the city that get to the two-hour meters, and then when the two hours are up, come out and slug the meter again. And I thought that the purpose of a two-hour meter was to keep the people from staying at the two-hour meter. That it was only meant that you should only be at a two-hour meter for two hours. And I noted that Pango, apparently, you can go to a two-hour meter, and Pango will notify you if the two hours is up, and then you get another two hours at the two-hour meter. So I'd like clarification. I thought, for city planning purposes, I think you should only be allowed to park two hours in a two-hour meter. And I was wondering if we couldn't do something concerning the rates, perhaps, after the first two hours. Instead of making them the flat rate of twenty-five cents for forty minutes, to increase it if you're going to stay at a two-hour meter. Because it's a two-hour meter, you want people to move in and out. It has two purposes.
I think that's an idea, Rich. The problem is, I think you could do it with Pango a lot easier than you could do it with somebody that's depositing a quarter. I mean, how do you tell whether that individual was just pulled in or has been there for two and a half hours already?
Well, I-
And then if you increase the rate of that two-hour meter too much, you kind of penalize the person that's really using it the way it was designed.
I'm not talking about the first two-hour rate. I'm just wondering if you can increase the meter rates some. I'm just throwing this out as an idea. And furthermore, let me tell you this, that Mo knew exactly who was using the two-hour meters improperly, and probably if you could get her back in, she could point out the cars.
Richard, I think we could do that easily with Pango, but you can't do it with somebody putting a quarter in, because how do you determine?
What's the rule, though, Rosie? I'm trying to figure out what the rule is. Should you be allowed to stay at a two-hour meter longer than two hours or not? I'm not talking about it, of course, but I'm asking you what the rule is.
I don't know that there's a rule. I think the understanding has always been exactly what you said.
Then you might as well have eight-hour meters where you have two-hour meters.
The difference is, and again, if you look at the rates, the rate for a two-hour meter is more expensive than for a nine-hour meter. However, it's less expensive than the half-hour meters, and it's for that same reason. The penalty is trying to be built into the rate. Councilmember Jim is, you're welcome to offer a higher rate for the two-hour meters in order to discourage-
I don't want a higher rate. I just think there should be a higher rate after the two hours.
As Councilmember Wolfert noted, unless you invest in a pretty high-end parking head meter, Pango is the only option to allow you to charge a variable rate for the second two-hour session. Because it would know that it's the same user asking for the second two-hour session. We have that ability. According to city charter, city code, the manager actually has the capacity to change and adjust these rates like that-
What is our-
Without necessarily having to go to ordinance each time to do it.
I know that you're pointing out some of the reasons why it's going to be difficult to do it. What is the rule? Are you supposed to be allowed to park more than two hours in a two-hour meter or not?
I do not believe, Mr. Jim, there's any rule to that effect. In other words, whether you're at a nine-hour meter and want to park eighteen hours, or at a two-hour meter and want to park four, there's no rule that says you cannot go beyond that first two-hour clip.
Why do we have two-hour meters, then?
I think it's designed so that you can have different rates, and it's designed so that the half-an-hour meter and the two-hour meter are more expensive than the nine-hour meter, and that's supposed to be the determinant, is the different prices for the different meters.
You have to come out of your office to plug it, slug it.
Exactly.
And that, Mr. Jim, is what does happen with these two-hour meters. That is what I have complained about. Because the people who work in time keep slugging those meters, and people that come in don't have many-
That's right, Peg. In other words, they come in and they, the employees are slugging the meters, and you can't park where you want to.
Where we need to.
For council-
Where you need to.
For council's justification, if you were to turn on page, the spreadsheet that has new meter rate, page two in the bottom right-hand corner, you will note that we are proposing that the two-hour meters actually increase, on average, higher than the nine-hour meters, for this exact same reason. We have built into this that understanding that the two-hour meter should be a premium. The premium price would, in theory, discourage people from camping. As our solicitor noted, there's no rule that prevents anybody from staying there all day. They just pay more to do that.
I think it was something, I think the two-hour meters, I thought the original idea was to support people like Peg that want to move in and out of parking spots. I think it's just good city planning, myself. So I know there's difficulty in enforcement, but if you, if the solicitor says there's no rule, there's no rule.
Well, I have a second question. I'm going for, I'm okay with three dollars to five dollars, but I don't like the ten-dollar one with you.
I think these lights need to be discussed in the future. The motion that is on the floor presently is just allowing the solicitor to advertise this.
You're right.
We have plenty of time to discuss these rates between now and when the ordinance comes to the floor.
That's right, you're right. Okay, this is motion.
Well, it's a simple motion. Parking garage needs paid for. This is how we got to do it. We all knew this in the get-go. Whining about it is useless, but it needs to be done. That's what has to be done. So we're going to be- Bro, man.
Okay, well, all right, we're like, okay, well, this is just, we're going to bring out, no, that's not what we're going to bring out, but I was, I should have brought it to ten dollars, because we have to do, yeah, voice. I think it's been suggested, let's get the ordinance drafted, see what the rates are there, and we get, that will provide time for every discussion. Right, okay. All right. Mr. Baldmarry, you have your motion.
People need to leave, you know, go out of town for a day and see what other people pay for parking and fines and things like that. Municipalities are sized, so, I mean, I agree, Stu, you're right. We got to do this. It may seem like a big jump from one thing to another, but we've been lapping in doing anything for such a long time that, that's why we don't have any money in our, in the bank for the parking garage, so.
All right, so, but right now, it's like Ken said, we have to just, this is just to advertise. Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And motion carried. This is just for advertising. Correct. The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm not going to read the whole resolution, it's fairly long. But I will read the title and just a brief indication of its purpose. The title is "Amending Civil Service Regulations to Change Passing Grade for Positions Above the Position of Police Officer, from eighty-five percent to seventy-five percent." And that's really what the resolution does in a nutshell. It simply takes one number that's currently in our regulations, which is a passage rate of eighty-five percent for all officers above that, a police officer, and it changes the passing grade to seventy-five percent. And as Chief Moore indicated, this is based upon a recommendation, I believe, of the Chief of Police Association. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions highlighted by the solicitor. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Wolfert, second?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forge? Any questions or discussion?
I just think it's important to clarify, the reason for this, Alex, isn't that we're lowering the standards, it's the test has changed, correct?
National Chief Police recommend the number that we're going to.
So we're actually, Alex, there hasn't been a change in the test. It's just that the grading has been changed to the recommendation of the National Association of Police Chiefs. Now, recommend that a seventy-five percent grade-
Is satisfactory for them.
Is satisfactory. So there's been essentially no change in the test, I'm, correct, okay.
How's our police officer feel about that? I sat in a meeting one night and had a gentleman tell me, that's inadequate. It's almost like working with somebody who don't have the knowledge that he has, at eighty-five percent.
First of all, the civil service test itself is not a great predictor of success on the job, nor is it a determinative factor in how one functions as a police officer. It's a baseline, let's, you know, let's just look at that. You have to pass to get promoted. We know who we're, you know, we know who the good police officers are based on their performance evaluations, how they conduct themselves on the job. This is only one factor, so let's look at it as such.
Anyone else? Mrs. Wolfert? Okay. Have more questions?
Ready? This is Resolution 201246. Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There's six yeses.
And motion carried, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, the last action item is also under the Police Department. And it is a resolution establishing a handicap parking space on Brinker Avenue. Whereas, Chapter 256, Vehicles and Traffic, permits the establishment of a handicap parking space by resolution, now therefore be resolved that a handicap parking space located on the south side of Brinker Avenue, specifically adjacent to property of Anna Jean Shepler being the same as hereby designated as a handicap parking space, ensure the applicant no longer reside at the premises located at 601 Brinker Avenue. Then in that event, the handicap parking space designation set forth shall cease and terminate on the last date of occupancy of this subject premises. Section 2, the appropriate city officers being hereby authorized and directed to take steps necessary- steps necessary to place up proper signage to carry to effect this resolution. Section four, that the within resolution shall become effective immediately. Section five, that any and all other resolutions inconsistent here with or hereby repealed, resolved in council disstate. The motion will be to adopt the resolution as highlighted by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Wolfert, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldmarry, any questions or discussion?
Oh, and somebody else would park there with handicap, there's nothing they can do about that, right?
No, they'd be fined.
Correct. If a handicap person would park there, another one would park there.
Another handicapped person?
Correct. That's not her house, that's not her...
Any other questions?
Madam, what was he answering to the question? Any handicapped person can park there?
Yes. All we're doing is designating that as a handicap parking space. If someone were, if she didn't need the handicap space and parked her car there and someone else parked it there the next morning, we couldn't do anything.
Any other questions?
This is Resolution 201247. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote as six yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Any unfinished business, number 10?
Madam Mayor, yes. Crosswalks, status.
If you recall at the last meeting, we indicated that we were going to have somebody, a trial person, look at this matter, look at the case, and look at the issues, and the person that we had...
I'm sorry, Jim, what? Who's going to take a look?
I'm going to have Mr. Nichols.
Oh.
Take a look at the case for me. I've described some concerns that I have, and he's going to look at it. One of the things he wants to do is to look at the crosswalks themselves. He was away last week, so I'm trying to set up the time to get that done. And then we will have a meeting with the city manager, myself, and any interested council members that wish to attend.
Thank you.
Anybody else unfinished business? New business, 11? Okay, Alex?
The city manager's report is before you. I encourage council to, you know, take some time to look through it. I've also emailed it to you as well. I encourage feedback. I just want to call your attention to our new city map, which should be mailed to the residents. Ann Powell did a great job in pulling this together, and I appreciate the other city departments for putting some information. We trust it will be quite useful for the next couple of years for the residents of our community and the greater Tri-Veria.
All right, I don't have anything other than what I always put in my manager's report about the Steel Fest and the national, I don't, I think everything went well. A lot of helpers, so. Okay. May I have a motion for adjournment?
I so moved, Madam Mayor.
Baldmarry, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forge, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carried. That...